Order and a roll call, please. Melissa.
Melissa Clark here. Rebecca Haynes.
Here.
Lisa Cavalluna.
Here.
Kimberly Smith Colaga.
Here.
Hillary Stokowski.
Here.
Jeff Zolke.
Here.
Diane Salter.
Here.
Jan Meek.
Here.
Carly Stone.
Here.
Diane Zidane.
Here.
Dr. Carl Heidrick.
Here.
Okay, all stand for the pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, before we start, I'm going to be adding an action item to this agenda. It will be action item A like Adam, and it'll be approval of the vaccination plan resolution. Okay, next, we're doing the oath of office to our four new board members. One returning and three brand new. Lisa Cavalluna, will you please raise your right hand and repeat after me? I do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of this state.
I do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of this state.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the office of member of the Board of Education of Brandon School District.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the office of member of the Board of Education of Brandon School District.
In the counties of Oakland and Lapeer, Michigan, according to the best of my abilities.
In the counties of Oakland and Lapeer, Michigan, according to the best of my abilities.
Congratulations, you're sworn in. Rebecca Haynes, please raise your right hand. Repeat after me. I do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of this state.
I do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of this state.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties of the office of member of the Board of Education of Brandon School District.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties of the office of member of the Board of Education of Brandon School District.
In the counties of Oakland and Lapeer, Michigan, according to the best of my ability.
In the counties of Oakland and Lapeer, Michigan, according to the best of my ability.
Congratulations, you're sworn in. Hillary Stokowski, please raise your right hand. And repeat after me. I do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of this state.
I do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of this state.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the office of the member of the Board of Education of Brandon School District.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the office of member of the Board of Education of Brandon School District.
In the counties of Oakland and Lapeer, Michigan, according to the best of my ability.
In the counties of Oakland and Lapeer, Michigan, according to the best of my ability.
Congratulations, you're sworn in. Jeff, raise your right hand and repeat after me. I do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of this state.
I do solemnly swear to support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of this state.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the office of member of the Board of Education of Brandon School District.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the office of member of Board of Education of Brandon School District.
In the counties of Oakland and Lapeer, Michigan, according to the best of my ability.
In the counties of Oakland and Lapeer, Michigan, according to my best of my abilities.
Okay, congratulations, Jeff, you're sworn in. Congratulations all four. Okay, next on our agenda, we're welcome to 2021, we have our Brandon High School student report from Ella Manino and Macy Roberts. You guys have the floor.
Hi, everyone. I'm Ella Manino, the Brandon Student Council President, and I'm here with Macy. She's our treasurer. We have a little short presentation, so I'm just gonna share my screen really quick. Never shared my screen before. Okay, and it is not letting me do that right now, so. Um, but it's okay, because we'll just tell you what we have on our slides, so I'm gonna hand it off to Macy.
Okay, so for Student Council, we're working on a few things right now. One of those would be like a staff shout-out board, so that's on the second level of our high school. And we just have like sticky notes where like the students can write like thank you notes or like thing, nice things to the staff. So that when the staff walk around, they can see those things. Another thing we're working on is like working together with the woodshop and art classes to build like benches, picnic tables, and flower pots to go in our courtyard. That way, the students like have somewhere nice to like hang out when it's like warm outside. And that way, we can like include everybody to like bring us all together. The art would be included by like, we'd have them like do sketches and stuff, and like we'd pick a winner. That way, like their art could be like represented on those benches. And then the like woodshop class, they would be building those for us. Another thing we're working on, this is like our other big thing is Charity Week. We normally do this like around the entire community, but this year, we're gonna keep it within the school. That way, we don't like ask too much for those like smaller businesses, because they're already struggling. We are doing the ALS Foundation, and so we're just gonna be working on events to raise as much money as we can for those.
Very good. Thank you. Anything else?
Um, yeah, we have some stuff that is just going on at our school in general right now. So winter sports are going to be starting up soon on January 16th. And then for our Business Professionals of America Club, they had their Regionals Week this past week, and we had some legal office procedure competitions, some business law and ethics competitions, and just some great things all around from them. And then we have multiple students at the high school who scored within the top 10% on SAT, PSAT, 10 and 9, too. And then at the end of this month, our exams are gonna be taking place this last week of January to end the semester.
Oh, that's great news. I love, I hope again, we will continue to have you at all our monthly meetings, because this is really appreciative that we get to get this catch-up. Anything else you guys wanna add?
That's about all I can think of. Thank you for having us.
Yeah, thank you, ladies. And again, we'll see you for sure next month, and you're welcome to stay. So next on our agenda, we have superintendent report. Dr. Heidrick?
Yes, let's start off with just recognition of School Board Recognition Month for January. Just an appreciation for all that you do, the past board and our new board. Thank you for your service, your time, all the dedication, and as we enter the new year, lots to work on. We just appreciate you as a local trustee and moving this district forward. And there is some goodie bags for you and appreciation for all that you do. That's from the departments and all the school buildings. And I want to thank all them for participating and Maria for organizing it. And I believe Melissa has volunteered to bring those around to you at the next available time. So again, thank you, School Board.
Thank you. Thank you to the school buildings, and thank you, Melissa, for doing, taking on that. Thank you, Maria, but especially to all the school buildings and staff. Our hearts, like I said, we really appreciate all of you. Thank you. And then next, you have a COVID update, Dr. Heidrick?
Yes, right after a winter break, we looked really good, but we do have an increase in quarantine at the high school. We had three positive cases on Friday. And so right now, our current quarantine for students is at 56. 50 of those are at the high school. We have four staff members under quarantine. We have four positive cases, so we have three positive cases with students, all from the high school, and then one staff positive case at central office. So we're looking in really decent shape across the board, except for the high school has that increase that we're gonna try to monitor very carefully over the next week or two. But again, recommending in-person learning continues at the high school at this point. The other, is there any questions on our COVID report for at least quarantine numbers and positive cases from our buildings?
I don't have any.
Okay, the other portion of this is about the vaccination rollout plans, and I'm gonna turn that over to Diane to talk about that further.
Thank you, Dr. Heidrick, and I wanted to make a statement from the board and some of the discussions that we had from last week. This week, the state of Michigan announced that teachers and other school staff will be able to receive the COVID vaccination as part of the next group in priority of distribution. While all schools, districts welcome this news, the Brandon School District and the other local districts who have maintained in-person learning options from day one as one of their many options for families have particular interest in the availability of the vaccine. The Board of Education applauds and commends the tenacity, ingenuity, and frankly, the bravery of all our teachers, food service providers, transportation personnel, and other essential staff and administration in these unprecedented times. Your initiative, along with, of course, the efforts of our family, students, and community overall, enabled the district to offer learning solutions that fit our community's educational needs by way of in-person, Brandon Learn From Home, other virtual learning, and hybrid opportunities when most districts close their brick-and-mortar doors indefinitely or otherwise offered more limited options. All of us should feel a sense of pride for the accomplishments despite the many challenges experienced during this school year to date. Thank you. We are honored and humbled to serve you always, but particularly now. The announcement of the availability of vaccinations for the next group, including teachers and other essential workers, provides some relief. We encourage all teachers and staff to register as quickly as possible to receive the vaccination. Please note, our board is entirely dissatisfied with the vaccination distribution process as ruled out in its failure to prioritize school district staff members in receiving the vaccination in an organized and uniform manner across the county. Information received leading up to this point regarding the vaccinations and the role of the Oakland County Intermediate School District and the Oakland County Health Department created an understanding and expectation that within the next group for which the vaccinations are available, a prioritizing of the distribution would be established based on those who have the highest level of risk, whether it is because of where they work or because of their age. Phase 1B, persons 75 years of age or older, and frontline essential workers in critical infrastructure. I was told Oakland schools through collaboration with the Oakland County Health Department was spearheading an effort to roll out the first wave of vaccinations along with among those in the phase 1B group. Given these communications and assertions and their roles in serving and leading on behalf of the county school districts, the announcement of the availability of the vaccine without a plan for prioritizing school district staff was unexpected and extremely concerning. When I asked representatives of both Oakland schools and the Oakland County Health Department during a recent meeting why the past announcement was not accompanied by such a plan, I was met with silence. Based on the asserted prioritizing of school district staff to receive the vaccine and related communications, we strongly believe any and all teachers and staff, and particularly those who have been providing services inside an educational building, should have been and should now be prioritized as first tier to receive the vaccination. Our board, our administration, and our unions will continue efforts to urge Oakland schools and the Oakland County Health Department to prioritize registration opportunities for our staff. School districts have been encouraged and recommended that school buildings should remain open if their level of spread was of low risk, controlled, and addressed per data of that school district. We followed that recommendation. We now need Oakland schools and the Oakland County Health Department as leaders of the vaccination distribution initiative to prioritize those carrying out this recommendation on the front line. While again, we encourage each member of our school district team to make every effort individually to register to receive a vaccine as quickly as possible through any distribution means they may have available. We will continue to express and assert as a priority the needs of our school district to both Oakland County Health Department and Oakland County Intermediate Schools. In addition, we will ask both departments for information regarding the vaccine registration and administration process. That includes the number of education employees who, one, registered for the vaccine and two, have received the vaccine to date. Next, the school districts they are from, and how many employees from that district received or are scheduled to receive the vaccination. The number of those who registered for or having received the vaccine were teaching face-to-face in the classroom, teaching during November, December, 2020, and/or January, 2021. The number of teachers or school staff who do not work in Oakland County, in an Oakland County school, that were able to get a vaccination or schedule one. Thank you again for our educational team. You are the real champions. We appreciate your dedication, and we are committed to standing up for what is right for our staff. Remember, we are Blackhawks, we are Brandon. Now, I wanna describe that action item A is a joint resolution that is partnered with and is supported by our superintendent, Dr. Carl Heidrick, your Brandon School Board, all our Brandon School District Unions, the Oxford Superintendent, Tim Throne, the Oxford School Board, and all Oxford District Unions. The vaccination resolution reads, "Resolution to formally request that in-person educators and school staff members receive priority inoculation during phase 1B of the Michigan COVID-19 vaccination plan. Whereas, the Board of Education of the Brandon Public School District and the Board of Education of the Oxford Community School District, Michigan, boards are publicly schools, public school systems within Oakland County. And whereas, the Brandon Education Association, the Brandon Administrator Association, the Brandon Education Support Personnel, the Maintenance and Operations Association, and the Food Service Employees, along with Oxford Education Association, Oxford Administration Association, the Oxford Education Support Personnel Association, the Oxford American Federation of State, County, and Municipal Employees, Michigan, associations, our collective bargaining units. And whereas, the boards and the associations, parties are in mutual agreement regarding the issue to have agreed to engage in a cooperative effort to affect change and advocacy for our dedicated education professionals. And whereas, the parties recognize that the schools are essential and in-person learning opportunities provide immeasurable benefits to school-aged children and young adults. And whereas, the parties have supported their respective districts in safely offering face-to-face instruction and have collaborated to create COVID-19 preparedness and response plans in accordance with the state guidance in the CDC protocols. And whereas, the Brandon and Oxford districts pioneered in-person pandemic learning and will serve as model districts throughout the state as other districts return prior to March 1st. And whereas, the school employees of Brandon and Oxford school districts are serving their communities by daily reporting to work, allowing their districts to operate and provide in-person learning opportunities. And whereas, the parties hold great respect for their school employees and appreciation and appreciate their commitment to students and families. And whereas, the parties value the health of all their employees, school employees, and acknowledge the risks presented by providing in-person learning during global pandemic. Now, therefore, it be resolved by the boards and the associations that the party hereby demand that the current status of a district, in-person or virtual, determine the eligibility of its employees for vaccination in the county with priority given to in-person school employees already working in school environments. And I just wanna tell people listening, the parties that will be on this resolution from the Brandon School District are Dr. Carl Heidrick, Brandon Superintendent, Diane Salter, Brandon School President, Andrea Noker, President of the Brandon Education Association, Diane Stevens, President of the Brandon Administrator Association, Buffy Lowers, President Education Support Personnel, Kurt Allen, Maintenance and Operations Association, Tammy Suter, Union Stewart, Food Service Employees, Teachers Local 214, in addition to the supporting staff over in Oxford. But I wanted to read that, and that will be action item number, action item A. And if anybody, if nobody has anything else to say, I would move on in the agenda, if that's okay. Next on our agenda, we have public comments and questions on agenda business. Maria, do we have anybody? Please raise your hand.
I will see if anyone has a raised hand. There are no raised hands at this time.
Okay, no raised hand, thank you. Next on our agenda will be the approval of the consent agenda. Could I get a motion, please?
I move for the approval of the consent agenda as presented.
Support.
Any discussion? All those in favor, if I could get a roll call vote, please?
Melissa Clark, yes. Rebecca Haynes?
Yes.
Lisa Cavalluna?
Yes.
Kimberly Smith Colaga?
Yes.
Hillary Stokowski?
Yes.
Jeff Zolke?
Yes.
Diane Salter?
Yes. Next, we have information and discussion items. Board of Education report, my report was just what I just got done reading, so I took up more than my three minutes. Does any other board member have a board report or information?
No, ma'am.
Okay, with none, Jan, the finance report, you have the floor.
Yeah, hi Diane. Tonight, the only report I have involves negotiations, and that will be part of our closed session.
Okay, thank you. Uh, next, we'll go into our action items. Could I get, in, could I get a motion for the approval of the vaccination plan resolution?
Move the Brandon Board of Education approve the vaccination plan resolution to formally request that in-person educators and school staff members receive priority inoculations during phase 1B of the Michigan COVID-19 vaccination plan as presented.
Support.
Any discussion from board members, Dr. Heidrick?
No discussion.
Having none, could I get a roll call vote, please?
Melissa Clark, yes. Rebecca Haynes?
Yes.
Lisa Cavalluna?
Yes.
Kimberly Smith Colaga?
Yes.
Hillary Stokowski?
Yes.
Jeff Zolke?
Yes.
Diane Salter?
Yes. Motion passes. Next, could I get a motion to appoint Maria as our temporary chairperson for the election of president?
Move that Maria should bring serve as temporary chairperson for the selection of a president.
Support.
Okay, and roll call vote, please?
Melissa Clark, yes. Rebecca Haynes?
Yes.
Lisa Cavalluna?
Yes.
Kimberly Smith Colaga?
Yes.
Hillary Stokowski?
Yes.
Jeff Zolke?
Yes.
Diane Salter?
Yes. Maria, you're in charge.
Okay, um, at this time, the next item is election of our president.
I nominate Lisa Cavalluna for board president.
Is there support?
Support.
Are there any other nominations at this time? See a none at this time. It has been moved and supported to elect Lisa Cavalluna as president. All those in favor, say yes.
Correction, Maria, can we do roll call?
Oh, we will, yes. We will do roll call, yes. We'll do a roll call. We'll start with Jeff?
Yes.
Hillary?
Yes.
Diane Salter?
Yes, yes.
Rebecca?
Yes.
Melissa Clark?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Lisa?
Yes.
All right, yes, okay. So therefore, Lisa Cavalluna is declared elective president of the Brandon Board of Education. Congratulations, Lisa.
Congratulations.
Hand the gavel over to you, Lisa.
Thank you very much. I appreciate everybody's support and look forward to a good year with this kind of team. How can it not be? It's gonna be fantastic. So moving on to the balance of our election of our officers, may I have nominations for the position of vice president, please? I move to nominate Diane Salter as vice president. Are there any other nominations at this time?
Did we get a second?
Do I have support?
Support.
Thank you. With one nomination being made, nominations are now closed. May I have a roll call vote on the motion, please?
Melissa Clark, yes. Rebecca Haynes?
Yes.
Diane Salter?
Yes.
Kimberly Smith Colaga?
Yes.
Hillary Stokowski?
Yes.
Jeff Zolke?
Yes.
Lisa Cavalluna?
Yes. So having been moved and supported and approved by the board, Diane Salter is now elected as our vice president for 2021. Congratulations, Diane.
Thank you.
May I now have nominations for the position of secretary, please?
I nominate to elect Melissa Clark as secretary for the 2021 calendar year.
Do I have support?
Support.
Thank you. Uh, with nominations now being closed, may I have a roll call vote on this motion?
Melissa Clark, yes. Rebecca Haynes?
Yes.
Diane Salter?
Yes.
Kimberly Smith Colaga?
Yes.
Hillary Stokowski?
Yes.
Jeff Zilke?
Yes.
Lisa Cavalluna?
Yes. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Melissa, now, uh, our Secretary, thanks again for your service for the upcoming year in that role. I'd now like to accept nominations, uh, by the board for the position of Treasurer.
I'd like to nominate Kimberly Smith Colaga for Treasurer of the Board.
May I have support?
Second.
With one nomination being made, nominations are now closed. Did someone want to say something? Okay, I just wanted to make sure. May I have a roll call vote on that motion?
Melissa Clark, yes. Rebecca Haynes?
Yes.
Diane Salter?
Yes.
Kimberly Smith Colaga?
Yes.
Hillary Stokowski?
Yes.
Jeff Zilke?
Yes.
Lisa Cavalluna?
Yes. Congratulations, Kim, you are now elected as the Treasurer for the, uh, 2021 year. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right, the next item on the agenda is the resolution to set the date, time, and place for regular monthly meetings. Do I have a motion to adopt, uh, a resolution regarding, um, the date, time, and place for regular meetings being the third Monday of each month, generally speaking, unless otherwise approved, um, and at 6:30, um, with the, the location as set forth in, in the notice for each meeting?
Move the Brandon Board of Education adopt the resolution as presented.
May I have support?
Support.
Thank you, may I have a roll call vote?
Melissa Clark, yes. Rebecca Haynes?
Yes.
Diane Salter?
Yes.
Kimberly Smith Colaga?
Yes.
Hillary Stokowski?
Yes.
Jeff Zilke?
Yes.
Lisa Cavalluna?
Yes. May I have a motion regarding the request for approval of depositories for school funds?
Move the Brandon Board of Education name Waterford Bank, the Bank of New York, US Bank, Michigan School District Liquid Asset Fund Plus, and Fifth Third Bank as depositories for Brandon School District and Michigan School District Liquid Asset Fund Plus as the authorized investment broker as presented.
May I have support?
Support.
May I have a roll call vote?
Melissa Clark, yes. Rebecca Haynes?
Yes.
Diane Salter?
Yes.
Kimberly Smith Colaga?
Yes.
Hillary Stokowski?
Yes.
Jeff Zilke?
Yes.
Lisa Cavalluna?
Yes. The motion passes. Moving on to item I, for anybody who's tracking this, uh, may I have a motion to designate the person to serve as our contracting agent?
Move the Brandon Board of Education designate the interim Superintendent of Schools to serve as contracting agent to sign agreements and contracts for Brandon School District.
Support.
Who said support, I'm sorry?
I did.
Thank you.
Do we have any discussion on that motion?
Ma'am.
Okay, having no discussion, um, presented, may I have a roll call vote?
Melissa Clark, yes. Rebecca Haynes?
Yes.
Diane Salter?
Yes.
Kimberly Smith Colaga?
Yes.
Hillary Stokowski?
Yes.
Jeff Zilke?
Yes.
Lisa Cavalluna?
Yes. Motion passes. Item K, uh, may I have a motion to designate the person authorized to sign purchase orders? I think we skipped one, Lisa.
Yeah, we've got to go back to J.
Checks.
I'm sorry, we're on K, guys? J.
Like John.
Oh, so sorry. May I have a motion to designate persons authorized to sign checks?
Move the Brandon Board of Education designate the interim Superintendent of Schools or the Board of Education President as the authorized person to sign checks for Brandon School District.
Support.
Any discussion? Okay, seeing no discussion, may I have a roll call vote, please?
Melissa Clark, yes. Rebecca Haynes?
Yes.
Diane Salter?
Yes.
Kimberly Smith Colaga?
Yes.
Hillary Stokowski?
Yes.
Jeff Zilke?
Yes.
Lisa Cavalluna?
Yes. The motion passes. Now moving on to K, thank you for that, everyone. May I have a motion, uh, to designate the person authorized to sign purchase orders?
Move the Brandon Board of Education designate the Executive Director of Business Services as the authorized person to sign purchase orders for Brandon School District.
Support.
Is there any discussion? Having none, may I have a roll call vote?
Melissa Clark, yes. Rebecca Haynes?
Yes.
Diane Salter?
Yes.
Kimberly Smith Colaga?
Yes.
Hillary Stokowski?
Yes.
Jeff Zilke?
Yes.
Lisa Cavalluna?
Yes. Motion passes. Item M, may I have a motion to establish fees charged for individuals requesting notice of board meetings?
Move that the Brandon Board of Education establish a fee of $1 per notice via postal mail for individuals requesting notice of board meetings?
Support.
Any discussion? Having none, may I have a roll call vote?
Melissa Clark, yes. Rebecca Haynes?
Yes.
Diane Salter?
Yes.
Kimberly Smith Colaga?
Yes.
Hillary Stokowski?
Yes.
Jeff Zilke?
Yes.
Lisa Cavalluna?
Yes. The motion passes. Item N, may I have a motion regarding, um, the establishing, establishment of board compensation?
Move that the Brandon Board of Education establish $0 per member as compensation for the 2021 calendar year, January 1 through December 31, 2021.
Support.
Is there any discussion?
No.
Having none, may I have a roll call vote, please?
Melissa Clark, yes. Rebecca Haynes?
Yes.
Diane Salter?
Yes.
Kimberly Smith Colaga?
Yes.
Hillary Stokowski?
Yes.
Jeff Zilke?
Yes.
Lisa Cavalluna?
Yes. The motion passes. Item O, may I have a motion to designate a person to post vacancies and accept resignations?
Move the Brandon Board of Education approve the interim Superintendent of Schools of his or her designee to post vacancies and accept resignations.
Support.
Any discussion? Seeing none, may I have a roll call vote, please?
Melissa Clark, yes. Rebecca Haynes?
Yes.
Diane Salter?
Yes.
Kimberly Smith Colaga?
Yes.
Hillary Stokowski?
Yes.
Jeff Zilke?
Yes.
Lisa Cavalluna?
Yes. Motion passes. Item P, may I have a motion to designate the person to post public notices?
Move the Brandon Board of Education approve the interim Superintendent of Schools or his or her designee to post public notices.
Support.
Is there any discussion? Having none, may I have a roll call vote?
Melissa Clark, yes. Rebecca Haynes?
Yes.
Diane Salter?
Yes.
Kimberly Smith Colaga?
Yes.
Hillary Stokowski?
Yes.
Jeff Zilke?
Yes.
Lisa Cavalluna?
Yes. Item Q, uh, motion passes, excuse me, item Q. May I have a motion for the delegation of the recording secretary duties by the Secretary of the Board?
I, Melissa Clark, as Secretary of the Board, delegate Maria Shubring to serve as recording secretary for the Brandon Board of Education.
Support.
Is there any discussion? Having none, may I have a roll call vote?
Melissa Clark, yes. Rebecca Haynes?
Yes.
Diane Salter?
Yes.
Kimberly Smith Colaga?
Yes.
Hillary Stokowski?
Yes.
Jeff Zilke?
Yes.
Lisa Cavalluna?
Yes. Motion passes. Item R, may I have a motion for the assignment of a Board of Education representative to the Michigan Association of School Boards?
This is a good time for one of the new people to step up, I think. Anybody interested?
I got, I think Hillary should do it.
I nominate. Hold on, hold on, where is it at? Sorry. Move that the Brandon Board of Education appoint Hillary Stokowski as the representative to the Michigan Association of School Boards.
Support.
And you just? Hillary?
Was there support? Rebecca support that, I'm sorry?
Did.
Oh, Melissa did, okay.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you, Maria, for asking. Does, uh, so, any questions, any discussion? Having none, may I have a roll call vote?
Absolutely, Melissa Clark, yes. Rebecca Haynes?
Yes.
Diane Salter?
Yes.
Kimberly Smith Colaga?
Yes.
Hillary Stokowski?
Yes.
Jeff Zilke?
Yes.
Lisa Cavalluna?
Yes. Passes, thank you very much, Hillary.
Thank you, Hillary.
Moving on to item S, uh, may I have a motion regarding the assignment of the Board of Education Representative to the Oakland County Intermediate School District?
Move that the Brandon Board of Education appoint Melissa Clark as the representative to the Oakland County Intermediate School District.
That's interesting.
Support.
Yay.
Thanks, Kim.
Any discussion? Have, have, no? Roll call vote?
Melissa Clark, yes. Rebecca Haynes?
Yes.
Diane Salter?
Yes.
Kimberly Smith Colaga?
Yes.
Hillary Stokowski?
Oh, yeah.
Jeff Zilke?
Yes.
Lisa Cavalluna?
Yes. So the motion passes. Thank you, Melissa.
Thanks.
Moving on to item T, Appointment of Designated Spokesperson for the Board of Education. May I have a motion?
Move the Brandon Board of Education appoint, where are we at?
T, as in T.
With the Brandon. Move the Brandon Board of Education President be appointed to the designated spokesperson for the Board of Education.
Second.
Can I just amend that to include President or designee?
I'll second. So you would designate someone if you didn't, if you were not able to?
Yes.
Or if somebody else was better versed, more appropriate, yeah.
That's fine, do you want me to redo it? It does say that, it does say President slash designee.
Yes.
We read it, Melissa, then?
Yeah, I can reread it, I just wasn't sure if you wanted one or the other, so. Move the Brandon Board of Education President slash designee be appointed the designated spokesperson for the Board of Education.
Support.
Any discussion? Having none, oops, did someone say something? Okay, having none, may I have a roll call vote?
Melissa Clark, yes. Rebecca Haynes?
Yes.
Diane Salter?
Yes.
Kimberly Smith Colaga?
Yes.
Hillary Stokowski?
Yes.
Jeff Zilke?
Yes.
Lisa Cavalluna?
Yes. Motion passes. Item U, may I have a motion for the approval of the authorized purchase, uh, for, excuse me, I apologize, a motion for the approval of authorized purchase card users?
Move the Brandon Board of Education approve the employee position titles authorized to use district credit debit purchase cards in conducting of district business as presented.
Support.
Diane, I have a question.
Oh.
In this instance, are we intended to identify the specific titles?
No, because it was as presented, I think we have the list that we were given in our board packet, uh, that's typical, but I don't think we have, you mean name them?
Correct, I just recall something. I know that much, I recall something else occurring, forget it. Um, I'm, I'm satisfied. Does anybody have any further discussion?
Diane, it does get posted on the website too, doesn't it?
Yeah. Yes. Oh, the names?
Yes, the names get posted.
Or the roles. The title, the title.
Yeah, the titles.
Yeah, I think we do have that on the website, yes.
You do.
Yep.
Very good, thank you. Any further question? Go ahead, Maria.
Once we're done with that action item, uh, can I ask you a question? Ms. President?
Of course, does it relate to this item, or should we move on with the vote?
Oh, you can move on with the vote.
Okay, very good. Any further discussion on this particular action item? Having none, may I have a roll call vote, please?
Melissa Clark, yes. Rebecca Haynes?
Yes.
Diane Salter?
Yes.
Kimberly Smith Colaga?
Yes.
Hillary Stokowski?
Yes.
Jeff Zilke?
Yes.
Lisa Cavalluna?
Yes. The motion passes. Maria?
Just a quick question, um, there's an action item, designate person to serve as electronic transfer officer. And, um, I think it's L on yours, Lisa.
And we didn't catch that one, I was gonna.
Can, can we?
Thank you.
Go back to that one?
I appreciate that, thank you.
Are you okay with that? Okay, thank you.
Thank you. May I have a motion to designate a person to serve as electronic transfer officer?
Move the Brandon Board of Education designate the Executive Director of Business Services as the authorized electronic transfer officer for Brandon School District.
Support. Is there any discussion? Having none, may I have a roll call vote, please?
Clark, yes. Rebecca Haynes?
Yes.
Diane Salter?
Yes.
Kimberly Smith Colaga?
Yes.
Hillary Stokowski?
Yes.
Jeff Zilke?
Yes.
Lisa Cavalluna?
Yes. The motion passes. Thank you very much, Maria.
Thank you.
Um, the next item is item V. May I have a motion for the approval of the Oakland County Parent Advisory Committee representatives?
Move the Brandon Board of Education approve the following parents for appointment as representatives for the Oakland County Parent Advisory Committee, Dana Hilton and Kelly McGraw.
Support. And Diane, would you like to, um, share with us any thoughts on this particular action item?
I know, um, it's, um, but what we're hoping is that we can be in person, we can personally introduce them to you at our next meeting, so that you can actually meet them. And, um, they are on as participants right now, and I thank them for volunteering to be our representatives to Oakland schools. And also, uh, many thanks to Lorraine Lucas and Terry Kradovich, who have, um, held our parent reps, uh, have been our parent reps for many, many years, and have helped us move along in assisting in communication with, um, parents with children with special needs, so. Um, we'll do more at our next meeting and do a little presentation on what our parent advisory committee does. So thank you very much.
Thank you, we look forward to that. Does anybody have any questions for Diane or any other discussion on this action item? Having none, may I have a roll call vote?
Melissa Clark, yes. Rebecca Haynes?
Yes.
Diane Salter?
Yes.
Kimberly Smith Colaga?
Yes.
Hillary Stokowski?
Yes.
Jeff Zilke?
Yes.
Lisa Cavalluna?
Yes. The motion passes. Moving on to item W, may I have a motion regarding the approval of extended COVID-19 continuing continuity, excuse me, of learning plan?
Move the Brandon Board of Education approve the Brandon School District extended continuity of learning plan.
Support.
Is there any discussion? Having none, may I have a roll call vote, please?
Melissa Clark, yes. Rebecca Haynes?
Yes.
Diane Salter?
Yes.
Kimberly Smith Colaga?
Yes.
Hillary Stokowski?
Yes.
Jeff Zilke?
Yes.
Lisa Cavalluna?
Yes. The motion passes. Thank you, everyone, for working our way through that list. I appreciate everybody's assistance in, in getting it done and keeping on track. Thank you. Um, next on our agenda is, uh, seeing if we have any citizens input. Maria?
Yes, I will look here.
Thank you.
There are no hands raised at this time. We do not have any citizens input.
Okay, and the next item on our agenda, item 12, is, um, moving into closed session for negotiations. May I have a motion?
Move the Brandon Board of Education approve to enter a closed session for the discussion of negotiations.
Support.
Is there any discussion? May I have a roll call vote?
Melissa Clark, yes. Rebecca Haynes?
Yes.
Diane Salter?
Yes.
Kimberly Smith Colaga?
Yes.
Hillary Stokowski?
Yes.
Jeff Zilke?
Yes.
Uh, Lisa Cavalluna, sorry.
No worries, yes. So the motion passes. We are now adjourned to move into closed session for negotiations.